Amy, would you do roll call, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Dibdal.
Here.
Commissioner Wolf.
Here.
Commissioner Wire.
Here.
Commissioner Berish.
Here.
And Mr. Mayor Lindsey.
Here. You have before you the agenda for this evening.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next is the consent calendar. Is anything anyone wants to remove or discuss on the consent calendar? If not, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Under appearances, we have Mr. Joel Jorgensen from Madison High School. Yeah, look for the little red light. There you got it. Very good.
Well, good afternoon.
Yes, good afternoon.
Thanks for the invite, I guess. I called Jamison. He found the one that he didn't have anything going on, so he filled it up with something for me. It was nice of him to do that, so appreciate that. But I just thought I'd give a quick update on mainly a couple of things that we have going on, the building project that we have taking place right now at the middle school. We did a renovation of the of the middle school, the current middle school, which I believe is about thirty-three years old, so from the floor to the ceiling, we updated everything. We also updated the fire alarm system, the intercom system, everything that goes along with it. Cabinets, they were just, they needed some repairs, so that's all been taken care of, and luckily that got done prior to the start of school. I was a little nervous about a week before, but they pulled in about fifty workers that last week at a time and got it done. But the addition itself that's being added on will change a lot of things now. You'll come in at street level, and you'll walk in, and you'll have vestibular, just like we have for the high school where you'd be buzzed in. On that main level, as you walk in, will be the reception area, will be the principal's office, the counselor's office, will have a nursing area there, ISS room there as well, and across the hallway then will be a conference room. So all that will be on the street level. Then you'll actually take the steps going down to get to the middle school classroom level. Whereas before, those steps were all on the outside. It'll all be inside now, so I won't have people falling every year, and us trying to keep it clear every year, it's long overdue to have that change. And then once you go down those steps, there will be also be an elevator there, but you'll go down those steps, and there'll be four new classrooms. So all of the middle school is still going to be on the same level. It'll all be on the exact same level. The only thing that you'll go up steps for will be to get to the principal's office, or if you have to see the nurse, guidance counselor, whatever it may be. The other big change that'll come along with that addition is the fact that we'll have a separate bus loop. You'll see to the east, we have a new loop that's been in. The first lift of asphalt has gone in already. Our hopes are to have the second lift in here in November. It'll all depend on when the brickwork finishes up before we can get that second lift in. So the bus loop will be totally separate from the drop-off loop for parents, which is a huge safety change, and we're glad to see that happening. Brickwork started today. Brickwork will be about four weeks. We have plumbing going on. We have electrical going on. Roofing started, or is going on right now as well. We have some insulation going on, interior walls. Everything is on schedule. That's the good news, and we don't have to be into it until it's done. So right now, it's scheduled to be completed in February. I don't anticipate that will change. And I guess if it does, and it goes into March, it's not going to affect us in any way, shape, or form, because we will move into the new principal's offices and the reception area, and once that's done, the area that they're currently in is the only area that hasn't been touched in the current middle school, because we're utilizing it. So they'll have about two more weeks of work to do down in that part of the building. Couple other items, just real quick. Our enrollment's up, which is which is good news. You want to maintain, or you want to be increased enrollment with our funding formula. We'll be at eleven eighty-three, so we'll be up ten students this year, which is, again, as long as you're going up, you're doing okay. A lot of the double A schools are seeing declining enrollment right now. Some of the double A schools, significant three-figure, three-digit declines. Last couple of things I'll touch on. I just want to touch on one big change that's coming up is we're transitioning from smarter balance tests to the ACT test for our juniors. And that's great. They'll get a free ACT test, and I've been saying this for the last two years. There's other things that go along with it, though. Right now with the ACT, the kids who are taking the ACT test are those kids that are looking at going to college. So they know that if they do well in the ACT, there's a chance of some scholarships. There's a lot of things that go with it. They're taking it serious. We're going to shift now to where everybody's going to take the ACT. So we're still going to have a lot of kids that are taking it very serious, but we're also going to have some kids that maybe won't take it quite as serious, because it's not going to mean much to them because of where they're planning to go once they get done with high school. And the only reason I bring that up is because when you do the math, the ACT composites will drop throughout the state, because you're going to have more kids taking it who don't have as much skin in the game anymore. So as we see in other states where this has happened, there's been a three- or four-point drop in some composites. And I want to get that out now, because it doesn't mean that we're doing bad all of a sudden on the ACT. It just means those that are taking it, it's going to be a different group that's taking the ACT test. So I think that needs to be reminded of people. We look at our ACT scores. We're doing great. We'll see where it all goes once it's said and done, but it's going to be statewide for juniors only, that they'll take the ACT this coming year instead of the smarter balance test, which I'm thrilled to be moving away from the smarter balance test. That didn't mean a whole lot to our kids, to any of them. This at least, some will have some skin in the game, but it's going to be different from what we've seen in the past as far as ACT composites when it's all said and done. That's about all I have for you. Hasn't snowed yet, so I'm thrilled about that. Other than that, I appreciate the opportunity to to come and present tonight.
Thank you. Questions or comments? I'm really excited to see the entry at ground level. You know, the pocket that was there before at the bottom of the stairs was great for catching snow and ice, and it just makes it so much safer for everybody, you know, to come in at ground level, so.
Yeah, it was great for having snow go all the way to the roof and a way for them to slide off the roof, I think, too, at uncertain times. So it was really a hassle to try and keep it clean. Almost impossible, so.
Do I have a quick question?
Yep.
So you said we are seeing some steady growth. Are our facilities set up for continued growth?
We are. We are. By adding these four classrooms, so right now, our elementary is about at five twenty, which is, we don't want to be a lot bigger than that. We were at five fifty at one point. By adding these four classrooms, it gives us a lot of options. If our middle school expands, we've got the classrooms. If our high school would expand, we can use some of the west side of the middle school, actually, to be part of the high school. We're covered there. And if we would really have a see a big growth in the elementary, there's always the possibility the middle school could become five through eight. Now, having said that, we're not moving the fifth graders up. I'm just saying by having those additional four rooms where we have them, we're positioned for growth in any of our buildings right now.
And at one time, correct me if I'm wrong, we were in the thirteen hundred, just under fourteen hundred students, I know during some of my kids' classes.
That would have been, would have been long before my time, but yes, it was it was more than ten years ago. I'll say that. But I know way back when, there was a time when when we were in the thirteen hundred, I think, at one point.
Other questions or comments? Well, thank you for taking your time and to be here and present it to us and the public in general, too. And it will be interesting to see where the test scores go.
Yep, and when we get to that point, I'm sure we'll have an open house with the addition, and we'll go from there, so.
Sounds great.
Thanks for the invite.
Thank you. Stacy. Stacy, I think you turned the button off. Red light's not on yet. There you go. You're good to go.
There we go. Thanks, Joel. Stacy Cruzmark, Dakota State University. I'm the vice president for Business and Administrative Services on campus. And just a few updates. Probably number one, that you heard in the news recently, but we have a leadership transition that is in plan. Did I ask? Nope, there we go. Last week, I believe, the board of regents announced that Dr. Griffiths will be stepping down, most likely at the end of this school year, where she will then assume the position of chancellor, a new position created for Dakota State University. A new president search will be underway. The board of regents is the entity that will hire that position. And some of you might be familiar with the process that we went through ten years ago when we did hire Dr. Griffiths. And so, very similar to that, the board probably will advertise this winter, do the search this spring, and potentially start a new president this summer. Obviously, that's up to the board, so those exact dates will be will be something they determine. But her position as chancellor will allow her to focus a little more time on some of the national and the strategic initiatives that we have seen with her leadership, and allow for a transition period from her role as president these last ten years and to a new president that would be incoming. Enrollment growth, as Superintendent Jorgensen mentioned, is obviously a big thing on our campus as well. We did see our record enrollment this fall of three thousand eight hundred and forty-two students that are at Dakota State University. That, again, is our largest in our history. We look at our housing on campus, which is always a question. We opened Residence Village back in twenty twenty-one. It does not seem like four years ago, but that new facility opened at that time with a hundred and twenty-two new beds. We are about ninety percent full on campus, which is a pretty good number to have from a from an occupancy percentage. Some academic programs that are very interesting. We just launched a new Masters of Science in Cyber Operations. You all can apply to that if you have, maybe Commissioner Berish already has that operations degree. But that is one of the fastest-growing fields and, obviously, one of the flagship programs at Dakota State University. So I have a Masters of Science, and that is another feather in our cap. The Computer Science Program has A-Beta accreditation. This is a nationally-recognized accreditation standard and a very prestigious piece to have added to our academic programs. And then last week, we had an interesting announcement on campus, a partnership between Dakota State University and Lifescape. Some research that we've done in our Adapt Lab with Justin Blessinger, creating some materials and 3D-printed items that work with those employees that are in Lifescape and providing some protection layers for them in their in their challenging jobs. Facilities, if you're familiar, we had a launch of the Beetle Hall, or an opening of Beetle Hall, eighteen eighty-six. That building was opened back in one of the first facilities at Dakota State University. We just renovated that to update the facility. Very interesting renovation when you think of a building that opened in eighteen eighty-six, had several renovations in between, and now in twenty twenty-five, a few years later, in the mission that Dakota State University has. It's a great upper, a great building to look at if you have an opportunity to join campus and walk through. To fill your calendars, tomorrow, we are hosting the History and Ethics Forum. So if you have an opportunity, six o'clock tomorrow is the social with a six-thirty, beginning with Professor Samuel Friedman, award-winning author and columnist. He'll give a talk on Hubert Humphrey and his South Dakota roots. And it's interesting forums that we've had the last three or four years on history and ethics. And oftentimes, how does ethics, history, and technology kind of cross paths in a in a very intriguing way? September twenty-fifth was Trojans Give Back, and a very awesome thing for Dakota State University. We had nine hundred and sixty-eight students, faculty, and staff, just under a thousand individuals, doing volunteer work within the community, within the area. Total of over two thousand eight hundred hours of time spent on a variety of projects. I'm sure some of those were in the city that you're probably familiar with. This was started ten years ago with Dr. Griffiths's vision in saying, rather than, as I recall, her inauguration was the non-inauguration, she wanted it to be about everyone else, not her, and said, let's have it be a service project. And it's very interesting to see ten years ago and to now, and have almost a thousand people participate in that volunteer give back to the community. So last but not least, DSU Athletics. Football team is five and two, an exciting new conference, the Frontier Conference. Volleyball is ranked number four in the country and playing again tonight in Montana. Cross-country continues to excel and and set some records there. And basketball, which usually happens in the wintertime, starts next week, so we have home opener a week from today. So a bit scary, so. That's all I have for an update today.
And the new soccer program.
And the new soccer program, which got its first win this fall and another tie. It's the only sport that I know of, other than the NFL, that can tie. But they have one win, two ties, and an exciting inaugural year, so. But I'll stand by for any questions and really appreciate the opportunity to give an update.
Very good. Questions or comments?
Stacy, do you know off the top of your head what percentage of that enrollment is on campus versus virtual?
Oh, off the top of my head, I don't.
That's okay.
It's a really challenging question, and I say to people who ask me the simple question, what's your enrollment? Very complicated, because we have so many students that are on campus, taking online courses. We have online students that are taking a course here or there. We have a teacher apprenticeship program where they're at their district, taking online. There's just, it's a very different delivery method than perhaps when I went to school and perhaps others. But our enrollment of those credit hours is probably about half. And then our graduate degree programs have really skyrocketed in enrollment, and some of that is certainly due to our national recognition in some of the specific areas like cyber operations, so.
And I do have a printout of all of that information on my desk. And the interesting thing there, too, is how many countries are also involved and enrolled through DSU as well. And so if you'd like that, I can give you a copy of that afterwards, so.
Countries and states. It's very interesting how many of the forty, of the fifty states. I think we have forty-eight of the fifty where we have a student participating.
Other questions or comments? Well, DSU is definitely an asset to the city of Madison, so, and thank you for being here and giving us an update.
Thank you.
Seeing no unfinished business, under new business, public hearing upon the application for the transfer of the retail on-sale liquor license from MKT Properties LLC to Baldezars LLC. Is there anyone in in the room that would like to speak on the application publicly? Jada, did you want to add anything to it?
Just that we're really excited for the opportunity to continue to serve Madison and in a larger space with more service opportunities.
Is there anyone else? Okay, seeing no other public comment, we will move on to number nine. Consider the approval of the transfer of retail on-sale liquor license from MKT Properties LLC to Baldezars LLC. Now, open it up to discussion from the commission.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Number ten, first reading of ordinance number one six eight two, amending the twenty twenty-five Budget Appropriations Ordinance number one six seven two. Amy or Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I want to make sure I clear here, we have two ordinances with first readings on the agenda tonight. The first one is amending the current year's budget that we are working within, and this is to make a correction within the two thirteen second penny sales tax fund. The original ordinance incorrectly had a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars listed under other miscellaneous revenue, and we're simply removing that to make sure that we have that that corrected. This was just a mistake that we had identified when we were working through this year's budget process, and we want to make sure that it is corrected. Stand by for any questions.
Questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve ordinance number sixteen eighty-two.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. First reading of ordinance number sixteen eighty-three, twenty twenty-six Budget Appropriations. And again, Jamison?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So everybody knows we've been talking about budget for quite some time now, and it all boils down to a fairly simple two-page ordinance. We've gone through many slides and department details in previous meetings, and we're not going to go down that level of detail, but I do want to outline the the overall ordinance sixteen eighty-three, as well as some of those final finishing touches that we've discussed in previous meetings, and we want to make sure everybody's clear on where those ended up falling at. So this this ordinance has a twelve-million-dollar budget for the general fund, as well as large budgets for enterprise funds, and you can look through those exact numbers. Some of those utilities have large capital projects for this next year, so do be aware that that inflates some of the numbers that you're going to be seeing. Some of the finishing touches from previous meetings, I know we had talked about some capital projects and where those would fall. We had applied for a grant for the recreational trail program. We did not receive that grant, unfortunately, and so that did not make this year's budget, as we wouldn't have enough funding to pay for that in totality. So that is not within this budget. A couple of things that are in the budget is replacement of the sports plex roof. That is ninety-two thousand dollars. This year, we replaced about two-thirds of the roof, and we were hoping that the last third would last a few more years, but we did find this last spring that there was leaks occurring, and so we have scheduled ninety-two thousand dollars in this year's budget to take care of that. If we if we don't take care of it this year, it is something that likely will be needed within the next year or two, and our recommendation is to pay for it, or to but schedule that project in twenty twenty-six. Otherwise, we might risk leaks or other things that could cause damage to the facility. Also included is replacement of the lights at Flynn Field, our baseball stadium. That was costs estimated a hundred sixty thousand dollars. We've budgeted a hundred eighty thousand, knowing that there's always miscellaneous costs that go beyond the purchase of the lights. Of that hundred eighty thousand dollars, we've been able to secure a number of significant outside partnerships to contribute towards the project. The ball, so Baseball Association is willing to contribute forty thousand dollars. The Heartland Energy is willing to give an energy efficiency grant, which totals fifteen thousand dollars. And then the Dakota State University has their baseball team uses our facilities, willing to contribute fifty thousand dollars. That is the total amount, but those are spread out over a number of years, ranging from three to ten years. So the city would be looking to pay for the total cost upfront, and then we'd be collecting that revenue over a period of three to ten years, depending on what those entities contributed or are committed to. Those lights are still working, but we know that they have been in use for many years and are probably reaching end of life. And due to the significant contributions and cooperation that we're seeing from these outside entities, we are recommending that that be budgeted for next year. Also, I know a big topic was the nonprofit funding request. That's been talked about, I think, more than one meeting, and we've received kind of varying direction over the time. So we've we've taken kind of a middle-of-the-road approach, and we've included those those funding with a ten percent cut from previous years. And that's certainly, any of these things can still be adjusted, but again, that's just kind of a middle-of-the-road approach from what we've been hearing in the past. I think that wraps up most of the loose ends that people, oh, nope, I also want to make sure to note wages. Our wage study, unfortunately, has not followed the original timeline we had hoped for. It's been delayed due to reasons outside of our control. Though that study can still be completed this year in time for making any changes to salaries and wages for twenty twenty-six. And so our budget at this point is going to be the best projections and numbers that we have at our disposal. And so the eight percent number that we've had as a placeholder in the past has maintained into this budget draft. And then as we move forward with with wage study and with other activities, we can make any adjustments that we need to for next year. I've reminded myself, as well as staff and others, that it wasn't that long ago that, a few years ago, we had to have, we had to have our budget finished around the August timeline, and then the state made a change that allowed cities to pass budgets later in the year. But before, not not that long ago, when we had the August approvals, we would do the best estimates we can. We'd put projections in for for wages and for insurance and for all sorts of projects that were upcoming, and then we would make adjustments if needed. And that's that's what we have to remind ourselves, that we can't have every number exactly perfect in this budget. But we do feel this is a good budget. We've put a lot of time into it. And if needed, whether it's later this year or future readings of this ordinance, or if we need to come back next year to make supplemental appropriations ordinance, we can always make those changes. It's a high-level view, but I'm happy to answer any questions on any detail that you might have.
Okay, now, this being the first reading, the second reading would be scheduled for?
The next meeting, two weeks.
Two weeks.
And if there's any substantial changes between the first reading or second reading, then we would schedule a third reading to make sure that there are two readings with at least ten days apart to follow that state law, to make sure that people see what that that final that final budget is at least two times.
Any questions or comments?
What what's the state law on the final approval for? Is there a deadline for the budget?
I can't remember if it's end of the year or if it's something earlier in December, but I know many, some cities aren't introducing them yet. Some are starting to do introductions in November, so we do have some leeway yet. So there's time, yes.
And one of the things I just mentioned at this point in time, having set in on the East Dakota Transit meetings and that they do transport people to and from work, and those people do pay a portion in that of that travel, and they're looking at raising the rate per ride from two dollars to three dollars. And even doing that with the federal cuts and the state reductions and that, they're looking at a twenty thousand dollar shortfall for next year. So just take a look at it and see, you know, if that extra ten percent, you know, could be left in, and that to minimize the amount that they're going to have to go out and try to raise to hold the budget, so. And I haven't heard from any other entities at this point, so I'm not sure if any of you have.
I've spoke to the chamber, the LEIC, regarding some of the cuts, and I think they felt like they could weather the storm a little bit. Fire department as well, obviously, myself and Kelly are on there. I talked to Randy about cuts on their side. I think that could be weathered. Outside of that, I didn't really hear anything else from any other groups, but I do want to comment that they're all very, very important organizations, and cuts like this are not easy to make. I think our conception is more or less, or my conception is that everybody's going to have some skin in the game. There's some city departments that we're looking at thirty percent cuts in some areas, so ten percent, I think, is kind of a fair direction to have everyone kind of feel a little bit of it, so. But outside of that, I haven't heard from any other organizations, unless anybody else here has.
Same, same groups.
I mean, I can speak to the Arts Council since I'm on the board, and we were just estimating roughly at around a ten thousand dollar allocation as opposed to the twelve thousand five hundred that we've been getting, just kind of a estimate of where things might fall. I did spend some time looking. I did spend some time looking at the community donations. And, you know, that that one I found to be a bit of a challenge because the Chamber and the Madison Area Development Corporation, have to say that instead of L A I C. You know, they have historically received roughly seventy-five percent plus of of that pot, which, you know, skews things a little bit when we're talking about things like the the ICAP senior dining, which their request was, I think, twenty-nine hundred dollars. You know, so they're they're going to have a harder time with a cut there than some of those bigger dollars would. So I I kind of struggle with that, too, cutting cutting the budget for something like senior dining, which is asking for a relatively small amount to begin with.
Any other comments? I really appreciate everybody's input. So we have the first reading of ordinance number one six eight three. And the second reading will be at our next meeting two weeks from now. If there's no further discussion, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number sixteen eighty-three.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign. Motion carries. Number 12, approve approval of the 2023 audit report. Jameson, would you want to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Last meeting, we had approval of the 2023 annual financial plan. What am I thinking? Is that the right word? Annual financial report. That's what I'm thinking for. And and this time, we have the 2023 audit report. And as I stated last time, those are very similar documents. But ultimately, the annual financial report is our our yearly disclosure of our financial situation. And then the audit report is an independent auditor's formal opinion on the accuracy of our financial statements, which are found within that annual report. So within the audit report for 2023, this is from from Shane Fish and Company. They had three findings that were listed, their material findings. These are all identical to the findings from last year from the 2022 report. And so these these were not surprises. These were things what we were expecting. And these are actually items that we said a year ago, expect these to be on again. All three of those have been corrected in 2024, and we've been operating with those those corrections. But of course, the 2023 audit doc or financial documents were already finalized. And so those material findings were were repeated. And I do want to go through those quickly just so we don't gloss over them. Twenty twenty-three dash one would be findings on internal controls, specifically the lack of a written procurement policy. So before 2022, we didn't have procurement policy, and there wasn't any finding because we didn't receive enough federal funds to make it needed. But since we had started receiving federal funding for some of our projects in 2022, it required a procurement policy. And once we were aware of that from the last audit, we adopted that procurement policy right away. Twenty twenty twenty-three dash two were weaknesses in internal accounting, control, and record keeping. And so there's a number of items on here, such as making sure we get reconciliations done correctly, inventory reporting, depreciation schedules. All of those items were addressed again last year. And finally, 2023 dash three, we had certain funds in the budget ordinance, specifically in the third penny fund, and then a couple of departments in the general fund that the expenses exceeded what was originally appropriated in the budget ordinance. And the city did not pass any contingency transfer supplemental appropriation at that time. I think the plan was to do it at the end of the year, but we really need to be doing those prior to those expenditures being made. And so that that has been corrected, and finance is now monitoring those funds to make sure that any changes that are needed are made before the end of the year. Those are the the findings in the audit report. Again, things we expected and things we have corrected a year ago.
Questions or comments? If not, do we have approval for the 2023 audit report?
Motion to approve the 2023 audit report. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the 2024 audit letter of engagement with Williams and Company. And again, Jameson, you want to address that?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just as quickly as we wrap up the 2023 audit, we want to move into the 2024 audit. And so per your direction, the last meeting, we have brought to you a letter of engagement for Williams and Company. This would be a new accountant firm for us, and they have some representatives here that are willing to attend. I will note, as we discussed last time, that this does come at a higher cost than the previous ones. But there are some additional services included within that. And more more importantly, the timeline for completion is is very soon from my understanding, but I'll let these gentlemen explain that.
Yeah, and thank you. And thank you, guys, for having us. My name is Logan Aukas. So I'm a manager with Williams Company in the office in charge of our Sioux Falls office. And I'm joined by Liam Stube, who's a senior accountant, also in our Sioux Falls office. So and I know Amy and I have gone back and forth kind of over the past couple of weeks, you know, kind of sharing some background about our firm. So I, you know, I won't go into too much detail to avoid reiterating and wasting your guys' time. And but certainly happy to answer any questions you might have. But, you know, I guess the the quickest background I can give is, see, we're a ninety-seven-year-old firm. We've got nine locations, Sioux Falls being as being our newest, with specializing in, among other things, governmental audits. So this is right up our wheelhouse, and and we're looking forward to supporting the city in in this coming year in twenty-four and hopefully in the years to come. And and hopefully, you guys are as well excited for us to join. And and certainly, like you said, Jameson, that it it does come at a higher cost. Now, we think that's worth it, right, as a combination of multitude of factors of, you know, we pride ourselves, of course, in doing a good job, but but also being timely, recognizing that, you know, the finance department can't do what they need to do without maybe some of those audited figures. So certainly, that timeliness is going to be a priority for us. But yeah, like I said, I won't go into too much detail, you know, unless there's specific questions. I mean, I'm happy to answer those or, yeah, whatever you guys want to know, I'm happy to speak to that. So.
One of the things that that intrigued me in that in going with you is your ability to work with Tyler Technologies, which we have as our accounting system and that for across the city. To me, having you, having experience, and the ability to work with the Tyler Technologies, that'll take a lot of time from our staff and and make things, I think, move a whole lot smoother. So that was one of the things that I liked in that, you know, when I was reading through your corporate information.
Yeah, and I totally agree. And we're huge fans of Tyler. We've actually helped with some Tyler transitions for some of our clients, just because of how user-friendly it makes the audit on our side of things. You know, and again, maybe this doesn't mean anything to anybody else. But, you know, and a lot of our other clients that use Tyler can have a computer set up for us already when we come on site with all invoices already in there. We don't have to bug any city staff. And so it also, you know, not only does it create a more effective audit, also more efficient, too. Where we can have access directly. And and so, yeah, to reiterate, Tyler's a tremendous offer. You know, we like to see that just as much in return. So, no, that's tremendous.
Other questions or comments?
You guys, you dove in a little bit to our financials. Do you think this year, December, you you'd be able to complete the audit or?
That's a good question. So you've got my promise. We're going to try really hard. Now, starting, so I initially, my my estimate for, you know, trying to get it done by December was based on maybe us starting just a little bit earlier in September. You know, now that we're going to be starting kind of in early November, so our plans are to come on site early November. We do have some predecessor auditor steps that we have to take care of with Shown Fish and Company prior to. So, you know, assuming cooperation there, which again, as soon as we get approval, that, you know, those wheels will probably start tomorrow morning. So so all that to say, since we're getting a little later start, my goal is going to be my goal is still going to be the end of the year. But if I'm being realistic, it might be end of January, beginning of February. You know, certainly, it's going to to take to make that happen is going to take some cooperation. But this Amy and Heather both have been absolutely tremendous so far. And so I see no issues there to where, so I guess what I would what I would target is the end of January. But we're going to push really hard internally. If if we can get it done prior to that, without jeopardizing quality, of course, we're we're certainly going to push as push as hard as we can. And part and parcel of that is the nice thing is having the horsepower of nine different locations. You know, we've been, as soon as we learned that we were going to be your guys' next auditors of in the background, moving staff and resources from other offices to, you know, yeah, try and get it done, because we know how important timeliness is. And and this will be the last thing I say on this point. But Jolynn is another face not here with me, but but I've mentioned Amy, who's an engagement manager level, which would be the same level as me within the firm and doesn't change costs or anything like that. We're also going to actually bring her in as well, to just get as much horsepower, as much firepower we can to say, oh, can we get back on track? And so, yeah, like I said, you've got, and I know we need to prove that. But you've got my word, we're going to, we're going to push as hard as we can.
I'll note on on the city's behalf, you know, of course, getting caught up is a top priority for us. But the number one thing is always making sure we get these reports done correctly and and in line with all standards. So if it's the end of the year, that'd be amazing, astounding, lots of other adjectives I could use. If it's end of January, early February, to me, that's still very acceptable. I do have another, sorry, Amy, go ahead.
I will say that they've already opened their portal to us, and we have been busy uploading all kinds of documents. So we are hitting the ground beyond running at this point. So I'm I'm optimistic for a completion by the end of the year.
I do want to ask about about the cost. You're here. Amy's communicated conversations to the group in the past, but since you're here, I'd like to get you on the record, too. We've we've we know that this one's going to cost a little bit more because of the the timeline that we're we're pushing. About sixty thousand dollars is what we've got planned for that. And then the expectation that that we've heard is that in the future that that cost could drop some. Could you confirm that and then can you give me estimates on what we'd expect future audits to cost?
Yeah, absolutely. And so what we use as a reference in terms of, you know, because how how the relationship came to be, it happened faster than it usually does with some of the other cities. But what we use as a benchmark, just so, you know, I guess you guys are aware that we didn't just pull the sixty-five thousand out of the air of like, that's what we felt like. And so what what we do, so we actually are the auditors for, well, so we've got a robust government audit practice in Iowa. But here in South Dakota, one one city that I would call maybe a peer city to you guys would be the city of T that that we also audit. And I and and especially in talking to Amy, very similar in size and in things going on. And so basically, I looked at what our fee is for that audit, which is in the fifty to fifty-five thousand neck of the woods. And and certainly, this year added a little extra buffer because I know just, I guess what was represented to me is has shown fishes primarily paper-based. We are primarily digital-based, and there and there's just some transition things and obviously a new relationship allowing for some of that. And and again, certainly the timeliness factor of having to pull people off other audits and those types of things, you know, just giving ourselves a little extra room the first couple of years. But and that's part of the what we like to do is take as much of a, now, we can't make management decisions, but as collaborative approach as we possibly can take to where, you know, i- if if city employees say, hey, we can do this work paper, we, you know, as opposed to us doing it, and we can come in and just audit that, and that saves us time. We have, we have no problem, and that results in more cost-effective audit. You know, those will be things we even suggest and endorse. And so I guess, you know, where I would like to get to is, you know, maybe the first couple of years aren't going, you know, are going to take a little bit of time for us to get to learn you guys, you guys to learn us in return. But it would be my goal, and I and I think talking to Amy, the cities as well, that we kind of get, you know, in lockstep, similar to what we maybe would of the city at T. And now maybe we get into it and just and learn, you know what, that's not possible. But, you know, again, from talking to Amy and without having seen, you know, the nitty-gritty financial information, I I think that's very possible. And and then I say that to say Dawn over at the city T does a tremendous job. We're very comfortable working with her and vice versa. And so that's kind of what I was using as a benchmark. And yeah, what I'd like to get to, and and I think so with the city. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments?
Maybe a question for Jameson or Amy, or maybe you guys know, too. But will we still get dinged on the timeliness, even if we would be able to get it done in 2024?
Oh, so the the legal requirement, you have eighteen months from the end of the year. So the requirement to get 2024 done isn't until June thirtieth of twenty-six. So we are, either way, we are well on our way to clearing that. My my personal or staff's goal is that our audits upon completion of the the fiscal year will be done within the first six months. So we have eighteen months. I'd like to get done within the first six months. That that's helpful for all of our operations, so we can have those those financial numbers to use for business practices.
And we have notified the state that we are in the process of changing auditors, so they're aware of that as well. Other questions? All right, seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, I guess, the approval of the 2024 audit letter of engagement with Williams and Company.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. Welcome aboard. Number fourteen, approve of change order number four. Park Creek Walls Improvement, Site Two. Kesselwood Excavation and Dirtwork Services. Ryan, did you want to address that or Jameson?
Yep, Ryan, go. Thank you, Mayor. So during performance of the wall replacement work located on the south side of the Park Creek Channel, adjacent to the alleyway, the contractor removed and hauled off off-site spoil material that was unsuitable for use as fill. This material consisted of large rock, topsoil, and foreign debris. So while completing the sheet pile installation for the wall replacement section, the contractor placed granular import fill material instead of that spoil material in order to stabilize the slope for driving equipment and also replace the unsuitable material that had been already removed. Importing this fill material provided benefits to both the contractor and the city. The contractor required stable material to safely operate their crane operations during the sheet pile install. And in turn, the city is benefiting from improved subsurface drainage that will help reduce hydrostatic pressure on the wall system and enhance support for the adjacent roadway embankment. Banner recommends compensation for approximately half of the imported fill material used to replace the unsuitable material. Since we're both getting a benefit from this, a total of five hundred fifty tons of material was imported. The contractor has requested a rate of twenty-two dollars per ton. Banner and the staff recommend payment for one half of that imported fill material of two hundred seventy-five tons plus an additional seventy tons of topsoil used to restore the embankment slope. So this would result in a total change of seven thousand five hundred ninety dollars. And with the change, the revised contract total amount would be four million one hundred ninety-two dollars or four million one hundred ninety-two thousand one hundred forty-three dollars. Banner recommends approval of this change order, and staff agree.
And Ryan, do you want to mention in there that eighty-five percent of that will be reimbursed, leaving us with a city cost of eleven thirty-eight fifty?
Yeah, yeah. So our our contribution toward the project is fifteen percent, the state pays ten, and the federal government pays seventy-five.
When and how will that be reimbursed?
After a project is completed, we we then submit all of our invoices to both our for both the design and the construction. We submit those all at once, and then the state of South Dakota looks through those first. They pass that on to FEMA, and then FEMA eventually provides that reimbursement back to us. It it takes a few months, but then we have gotten reimbursed for Site One already.
So you anticipate sometime in 2026?
Yeah.
Other questions or comments?
And the, go ahead. So the excavation caused the the poor material, the spoil pile, right? It's not, or was there poor material along the old?
Yeah, there was poor material behind.
It was poor material.
So we remove poor material.
Something you couldn't foresee, really.
Yeah, no.
But at the end of the day, we removed a poor sub-material and replaced it with better, correct?
Is there any justification for the only paying for half of it?
Just because the contractor had had gotten benefit from this swell. I mean, initially, they had imported that material in just so they had a stable material for their crane. They had actually hauled in more material than I guess I was even aware of at that time. And so and Weston's here from Banner as well.
Sure.
And when Weston can kind of speak to how we negotiated with the contractor and determined that fair amount.
Yeah, I I can step in. Thank you. Weston Blazias with Banner Associates.
You're on.
Weston Blazias with Banner Associates. So part of the scope of work was to replace the section wall on the south side of the channel. Now, part of that was excavating behind the channel and the contractor had performed that work. As part of that, they did mobilize a crane in to install sheet pile. And when they mobilized the crane in, they did need to take additional material to stabilize the crane. And that, that's the reason for only paying for half the material that was, that was imported. Because half was necessary for the project and deemed, you know, necessary to replace the unsuitable material. The other half was, let's see, the contractor's choice and, and reason for the contractor to have a safe operating pad for the crane.
And that was one tall crane, I'll say.
Yes.
Yeah, he was up there a ways. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve change order number four for the Park Creek Walls Improvement, Site Two. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 15, approval of amendment number two to the engineering contract, City of Madison, Park Creek Walls, Site One, Site Two, Site Three, Banner Associates. And Weston, would you like to address that one?
Yes, thank you. This presenting tonight or in front of you tonight is a amendment request for additional engineering fees on the Park Creek Walls projects. This contract that's presented, it's actually four separate contracts. I'm presenting it as, as one contract with, with the four, I guess, together as a limiting fee. This contract started back in 2020, back when the initial assessment was completed on, on the damage of the walls. From 2020, there was coordination with FEMA throughout that, you know, pursuing timeframe to, to work with them on the project scope and the project costs. We entered into further agreements in 2022 and that was related to the final design of the Site One, Site Two and Site Three projects. Now, as we completed the design work, which did, did take longer than anticipated just because we're working through some requirements that, that the federal agency had for us or for the city. That did take longer, but we did maintain on budget during those efforts. Now, when construction had started, that's when we started to take on additional fees or mainly due to the, to the size of the projects and the costs of the projects related to the contractors bids. Initially, the estimated costs that we had on the projects, which were declared in the, in the contracts that we have to the city, they were much less compared to what the contractor bids were. We, of course, normally base our fees off of labor hours, but we do check that with a percentage based on construction fees. In this case, our initial engineering fee was about 9% of what the actual construction fees were. Generally, we'd not be at, at 9% in a, especially in a, in a project of this nature with multiple disciplines and working with a federal agency. And for that reason, we did, we did experience additional costs and additional efforts during the project. And that resulted in what we're estimating, and we haven't finished the project yet, but estimating it's going to be about somewhere between $8,000, $10,000 to finish the project. We would, we would need an extra $69,586 to be compensated for the additional engineering efforts on the project.
Now, are any of these additional fees in that reimbursable with FEMA? Is that it, is it still a 75, 10, 15?
Yeah, we submit these just like we do our construction invoices and it, it is.
Okay, so the actual increase in that would, to the city and that would be 10,437. As I'm reading it. Other questions or comments?
There's engineering work left, you said?
There is, yep. So there's closeout of the project. FEMA does have required closeout documents that have to be submitted for them to close the project out on their end. There are some punch list items remaining on the Site Two project, that'd be Memorial Park. So we do have some coordination that we have to have with the contractor to make sure, to make sure those are completed. And the, the remaining fees, that, that will be billed at an hourly basis and that's the way the contract is set up. So if that $10,000 is not used or not realized in engineering fees, then the city, of course, wouldn't pay that.
Other questions or comments?
Was there a reason why you guys chose 9% instead of the initial 10 to 12% knowing that FEMA would be involved?
So we necessarily didn't choose 9% that, that original fee was, was higher than that. But based on the construction costs, the actual construction bid prices, that's what that would represent. Our engineering fee would be 9% of what that total is.
Other questions? Comments?
Amy, would this come out of contingency or where does this fall into the?
I would have to look at the budget.
I would have to look at the budget where we are. I believe we're actually over budget and have to supplement at this point. So it would come from there, but it would be long-term debt issued to the 517 creek mitigation.
Other questions or comments? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment number two, engineering contract, the Park Creek Walls, Site One, Two and Three to Banner Associates.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Weston.
Thank you for your time.
Number 16, approval of change order number one, Armory Gymnasium Floor, FLR Sanders Incorporated. Jameson, you want to address that one?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you know, we are replacing the floor within the armory due to the, the water that resulted from putting out the fire in January. And that project is moving along very well. One change that we are looking at making is due to the thickness in the concrete. Once they completed removals on the old floor, they found that the concrete underneath was much thinner than they had originally expected. And so the original floor that we had planned was an anchored system. And the contractor recommends we move to a floating floor system because anchoring or anchoring into that thinner concrete would cause damage and, and not be the best thing for the building long-term. This is actually a decrease moving to that floating system. We did ask them about the, the quality of that and they felt that this is a great floor. I think Ryan's comment was that this is one of the most popular floors that, that people install. And so it's an equivalent product. We are not stepping back or down in any way by switching to this other floor. But it is a decrease in cost of about, well, exactly $7,151.22. Standby for questions.
And Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong in that the original floor was going to be one and a half inch thick and this and here will be two?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, so we're also gaining an extra half inch in that, in the thickness of the floor that is being installed in that as a floating floor. Other questions?
Is that the original wood floor in that building doing?
Yeah, I believe it is. I don't know how old that floor is, but.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'm just curious if there's a reason why this flooring was not considered from the get-go?
Yeah, I wish Mike McGilvery were here. He, he kind of had dealt with the, the choice for the initial floor. He'd worked with a flooring company and he said, you know, what, what do you recommend here? What do you think would be best for the use that we want to do with it being basketball and volleyball and pickleball? And they had recommended this Action Tech anchored system at that time. They said it would provide a really firm and uniform feel, you wouldn't get a lot of vertical deflection in it. And they knew there was a concrete substrate under that and they thought that that would just be kind of the, the premium floor system for that. Once we had determined that that slab was thinner, I was concerned that maybe we weren't getting an equivalent floor system. But I even reached out to a number of people and looked up their manufacturer's data and comparable installations. And this Scissor Lock LP system would be, which would be this new one, really does appear to provide an equivalent performance in durability, ball rebound, athlete safety and doesn't appear to have any reduction in quality or long-term performance expectations. And Jamal from the community center, I spoke with him a little bit about it. And he, he had mentioned that this non-anchored system might even be better for people playing pickleball. That it might, might be a better, a better thing for uniform shock absorption and things. So had we, had we been a little bit more versed on floor systems of athletic facilities, maybe we would have made this an option from the beginning, but I have to be honest, we went into this learning as we went and, and bid this project out. So I think either way, the Action Tech, which was planned or the Scissor Lock LP system, they, they appear to be premium sports floors.
And Mike McGilvery is online if you would like to ask him any questions.
You, one of the things, can you guys hear me? I should say that.
Yes.
So one of the things was the ADA transition because the floor was built in 1929 and it was only a three-quarter inch thick floor. So they wanted to try to make as low profile floor as they could to try to have it for the ADA transitions and the door jams. Pete Dirksen and I worked hand in hand with the Claims Associates on that aspect of it. And then when we found out that the floor thickness was, from the concrete wasn't as thick, that ain't, the way they anchored the system would not allow that floor system to work. That's the reason why they had to switch. Does that clarify anything?
Yep. Any other questions from Mike?
With that said, does that change what we're gonna have to do to any of those door entrances with a thicker floor? They're gonna have to have some sort of transition?
Yeah, they'll have to do a different transition and that's part of this change order as well. It's not really broken out or anything, but they've, they've accounted for that in their, in their bid price for this new floor.
Other questions?
I'll make a motion to approve change order number one, Armory Gymnasium Floor, in the amount of $7,151.22 reduction.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Number 17, discussion and possible action regarding the maintenance and/or demolition of the north, now I gotta say it right here, 504 Northwest Fourth Water Tower. So we're talking about the right one. This is the old Madison Water Tower that is over by the old Lincoln School. So for those that are at home, so Jameson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll ask Mike to come up as well. So Mike's done a lot of the heavy lifting on, on this as far as the, the background, the research on it. The overall is that this water tower is no longer in use. When the new water tower in industrial park was brought online a couple of years ago, this water tower was brought offline. And there's no plans to, in the future, to use this tower. So the decision for the city is whether you want to, to maintain this, this tower, this asset or you want to demolish it as it's not needed for the water system anymore. Depending which option you go, there's a few different ways that you can approach that and I'll have Mike go through those details.
All right, thank you, Jameson, Mr. Mayor. So like Jameson said, tower is no longer in use. It's in need of some, some maintenance. So we went through and we solicited two quotes for each, for each option. We discussed before on the maintenance, there's a maintenance program that we've gotten quotes on from the past, which are, they, the annual cost for the first four years is 147 and annual cost in year five is 14,000. So it's going to be a total of 591,612 to, to maintain that. And then each year it, it's, it increases by about three and a half percent. So just estimates, they'd have to go out and, and get competitively bid. Next option is painting it. We solicited two quotes for those, a low quote of $460,000. I know Mr. Mayor had some concerns last time that it would be much cheaper. And, and it would be, but we cannot get anybody to commit to painting over the current thickness of paint that's on the tower right now. There is lead, pretty heavy lead that's in that, the, the paint on the tower right now. That has to be, the lead would have to be mitigated and they won't guarantee their work if they're gonna paint over the existing right now. So the timeline for that, it's gonna be, I'll, I'll, I'll touch on that below when we get down to the, the monopole installation. All, all these timelines are gonna be the same because with, with these things, they would bring in a temporary tower and be able to demolish or paint or do whatever they had to do. So demolition is the next option. That, that is, came with a low quote of 138,000, only an estimate. The timeline is gonna be same as what I've discussed before with installing a monopole where they'll be bringing a temp tower and at that point, they can just use that temp tower and demolish it and then they can put up whatever structure they want to, or they could remove their equipment if we decide that as well. There was, the next option would be removing the tank and leaving the pedestal. That's gonna require some structural tying together up top, handrails, that type of thing. And the low, low quote for that was 177,250, $250. Basically, that's gonna remove the tank and then just ensuring the structural integrity of the structure up top with handrails and supports for the existing structure. And then for the last option, we have an install a monopole. So there's a couple of different options with the monopole. Cell, cell carriers actually like to be on those rather than water towers, water tanks. And also with their propagation studies that they're, they haven't completed yet, but the propagation studies that they think is gonna happen, there's, their service that they have at the current location is, is, is prime for their home internet that they provide in town. So they'd like to stay in the same location. Obviously, it's not up to them. But there's a couple of options with the monopole installation. The first one, one of the carriers would erect the monopole and give it to a city with an, with an abatement on their contract to the construction cost that's paid for. The city would be able to collect on the remaining cell carrier contract. And then the second option, the city could provide a lease to a carrier to erect a monopole. And then that carrier, carrier would maintain ownership of the structure and then collect on the lease with the other carrier. And this construction timeline for the monopole, it's, it's really negligible. All they have to do is bring in a temp tower, complete the demolition and install their monopole, keeping service intact the whole time. And then under installation, they'd remove their temp tower and they'd have everything right at the site, at that same site, which is what they think is what their propagation studies are gonna come up, but that that's gonna be the best location with that height at about right around 65 feet. We would be able to enter into new agreements with each contract or with each cell carrier at that point because we are demolishing the, the, the tower. That allows us to renegotiate those contracts. And we could possibly negotiate for higher lease payments as, right now, as, as these are quite, quite outdated. And, yeah, and all the costs of the, the temporal relocation, that's gonna all be on the, on the cell, the cell carriers. So staff recommendation is to demolish the structure and installation of the monopole with the city retaining ownership of the monopole. Cost of maintaining the water tower far exceeds the demolition at this point. If the monopole is a preferred path forward, the staff will engage with the lessees on the tower to determine the timeframe needed to construct the mon, construct the monopole and to demolish the tower and whether that aligns with the city interests. And then if you scroll, if you have that up, scroll that all the way down to the bottom. We do have figure one, an example of the, of what a monopole would look like. And it's actually pretty close to what it would look like in that, that application there right in town.
How tall is the current water tower?
Um, right now, we're at about sixty five to seventy feet. How tall is the to- I'm not, I'm not even sure how tall the the actual tower itself is, but they're right on the handrails. They're about sixty five, seventy feet up in the air is what they're.
So it'd be about the bottom of the tank would be the top?
Yes, yep.
Did they give you any uh, timeline on that propagation study or?
I I have not, no. I ju- I just seen right before we sat down here that I got an email from one of them, so I I could possibly have that in my inbox, but I don't. I don't believe it is.
And there's nothing unsafe about the tower?
The monopole?
No, the current water tower.
The only issues I I see is with the the paint being and and there there are some structure ability um, issues with the ladder itself.
But wind shear, we're not worried about?
No.
It it's sa- as it sits now, we're. It doesn't require immediate attention, correct?
For the cell carriers that do climb it installed then and install their, that would need immediate attention. With the with, there's some bent ladder rungs on there that we.
Bent rungs on the ladder?
Yep.
In that, you know, for access going up and down.
Yep.
Now, my question is, is is the paint on the legs lead based also?
It is.
So even if we were to drop the to- the bowl itself. The question would be, you know, what do we do with the legs?
That's that would probably be have to be blasted and painted too.
Yeah.
I guess, yeah.
And you know. Having gone through training in the auto industry and that, you know, and things like that. That's something that I I would prefer to stay away from, from the standpoint that even though you can wrap it as best as you possibly can. You cannot totally mitigate it and and keep it from, you know, being a part of the atmosphere forever afterwards. So uh. At this point in time and that, you know, uh, having read through it personally and everything and and looked it over. I am inclined to support the staff recommendation. And I open it up to discussion from the commissioners.
Yeah, I agree. We uh, we tried to solicit feedback uh, on it and really never received any positive or negative. And so I think our best uh, idea would be to do the staff recommendation of demolition and and installation of a monopole.
I'd agree as well. Number four seems to be the option to go with, you know, it's a depreciating asset that's just gonna cause us more expense. Um, if we can turn that around and continue the revenue side of it, that's great. I don't think I would wanna do any action on it tonight, seeing as that's the first time I've seen the monopole in there. I'd like to get some input from the area residents there, just to make sure they're on board for it.
Absolutely.
As well as maybe there's other developers in town that would want to input any uh, ideas about that property. Um, if I know there's a church in there, I know there's some other things there, you know, there might be some people that are interested um, outside of that. And if that propagation study looks at moving over to a different area, then we can maintain that revenue. So I'd rather see just some more opportunity for input from, especially from those people that are gonna be right next door to that as well.
Well, and in my mind and that the monopole would go where the tower is now.
Sure.
You know, so and that is on city property and that does have all the underground uh, cable networks and everything and that to get to that po- uh, particular area. So.
Sure.
Moving it to a different area, I think would be extremely expensive.
So do we have to still provide a year notice to these?
Not if we're demolishing the tower.
Okay.
No.
Just because the service will continue on?
Yes.
Service will continue on, yes.
Yeah.
Have there been any complaints from property owners about the chipping lead paint in yards or anything like that? I think that would be a concern.
I haven't personally heard anything. Uh, I am still relatively new in town and a lot of people don't know my phone number, but I have went, I may have just uh, put it out there for everybody, but. Um, I have seen paint, I have seen paint on the ground around the tower there, so, yeah.
I I have gotten a couple of phone calls. It hasn't been for a while, a couple of years ago when we were building the new tower. Um, I know it was a concern of that neighborhood. If we were gonna take it down, they they were all for it.
Does this twenty twenty six budget, we just had the first reading of include funds for this project? And if so, what number did you use for that?
No, it doesn't include it.
It does not.
Next year's, uh, not knowing which direction we were headed, we left that out. Um, we could certainly make that change once we know more. It would be coming from um, the water fund and those enterprise funds do offer a little more flexibility in that budget process.
Okay, just so I'm clear that.
Yep, nothing's.
Whatever we decide, those those numbers are not reflected in here anywhere.
Have they looked into any grants available for lead removal? I know there used to be a lot of that stuff out there, but maybe that's kind of lapsed.
I have not found anything on that at all.
I don't know if that would apply to total destruction, but I'm sure there's so, I'm sure there's transportation of lead material. I'm sure there's a lot of stuff that goes into and where they need to essentially deposit that.
Right.
So.
Other questions or comments? So coming back to your comment just a minute ago. You weren't, you were not ready to make a full.
I can make a motion to table it till at least the next commission meeting until we get some more input. And then maybe we can take a look at the finance side and see how that pencils out, but I'd make that motion.
Other discussion?
I'm back to it, it's safe as it sits now, there it's not.
It's not gonna fall over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
The only issue I have is if they're, they wanna upgrade, 'cause I know there's a five G upgrade that they want to do. I'm I'm worried about that ladder. You know, being in that that industry myself and climbing on ladders that are that are bent rungs, I know they get red tagged a lot. So that's that's the only thing that I worry about. It's it's not gonna fall down, it's not gonna do any of that, but uh, just the safety of the the personnel that are gonna climb it.
So potentially, it's not something we could push to twenty twenty seven?
I mean, it possibly could if we talk to them. I don't know when they wanna take the um, their 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 upgrade to five G, but I know that was conversations that that they had started. Yep.
Is that something you could ask and that let us know at the next meeting?
Absolutely, yep.
So right now, we do have a motion to table any action until uh, two weeks from now. Is there any other questions or comments?
If they do do that five G, is the contracts gonna be more fruitful for us or?
Uh, no, it's just a lease space is all the contract for is basically, yeah, just lease space.
So the um, AT and T contract is set to expire in twenty twenty seven. Uh, do we anticipate they would just re- renewing?
They they will, yeah.
Okay.
Yep, they will, yeah.
They expire with the demolition, correct?
Both of them will expire with the demolition as well. But if I think she, I think she, you were speaking about it if we push it off till twenty seven.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
And we just have two new contracts with existing carriers?
Yep.
Good discussions, any other questions or comments? Okay, we have a motion to defer possible action for two weeks. Do we have a second to that motion? No second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
If you guys have any questions at all from now to the next two weeks, don't don't hesitate to reach out and I'll I'll do my best to get you what you need.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, number eighteen. Discussion on scheduling of regular city commission meetings. Jameson, you wanna address that or?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So uh, this was requested by uh, commission to put on the agenda for discussion. There's no action listed for tonight, uh, but the question is whether we want to consider alternate timings for your city commission meetings. Um, I've left it on, they're they're vague. I I think what the the direction that we were looking at was possibly moving one meeting a month to a noon meeting. And some of the reasoning behind that is it offers a little more variety in meeting schedules, which can be good for anybody looking to having that item on the agenda. Or come speak towards public comment or just participate. Um, and it also makes it a little bit easier on on staff, commission, everybody. Um, sometimes the noon meetings can just work well for that reason. Uh, I looked, I did some brief looking around in other local government entities. Um, cities are generally in the evenings, five thirty, six, seven o'clock is is generally where you see those. Uh, my my former city Volga does do a one meeting a month at noon, one meeting a month at five thirty, worked well up there. If you look at counties, most counties, the all counties I know of do in the mornings, eight thirty, nine o'clock. Um, I haven't looked up every county in the state, but generally, that seemed like that's when they meet. Um, so you you have no requirements for when you have your meetings and you have flexibility when you would like to schedule those. If you want to change the times on your meeting, staff could prepare a resolution and that would be sufficient for making that change. If you want to change the day of meetings, we could prepare an ordinance to change from a day other than Mondays. Standby for any questions or direction.
Questions or comments? I'm open to the will of the board.
Are either heavier, Jameson, the first or the third meeting typically or agenda wise?
Uh, no, um, I I don't think it is. The. Seems like um, we we put things on as they come up and so that that doesn't have any bearing. Um, looking at general calendar, you have a couple holidays that fall on third Mondays. Um, which generally, of course, move to Tuesdays. You have Thanksgiving and Christmas that fall more on the end of the month. So outside of the agenda, you might have this, the third Monday, the meeting, the second meeting of the month be more conflicted for for holiday schedules or or otherwise. Um, but as far as agenda items, there's there's really no difference in the two. If if we were to move one to noon, I think that might change a little bit. Staff would wanna make sure that those meetings are generally kept to about an hour, as we respect people's lunch breaks who are who are still working. Um, and that I I don't see any issue with that. Most of our meetings, as you know, are are an hour or or so or less. But um, for example, you know, tonight's meeting, we knew would be a longer one. Um, and right now, we're only at an hour twenty, which still isn't bad, but a couple of these items that were are discussion or or otherwise, we would have just held for um, a meeting when there was more timely agenda. Or for the five thirty meeting, if you maintain one at five thirty, does that make sense?
Other questions or comments?
I guess I'd like to see some variability, just because not everybody works eight to five. Um, having one timeframe outside of it, one inside, um, I don't think it's a bad idea. It'd be nice if you could kind of pick that each month, depending on how it worked the best, but I'm assuming that's not possible.
It certainly is possible. I I wouldn't recommend it for for consistency and clarity, so so people know when you're meeting, I I think you'd wanna keep it consistent.
You'd have to just say it, yeah.
I guess, just a question for my fellow commissioners, is this something we wanna table too and just see if there's any community feedback on it? I mean.
Uh, again, no actions on the agenda tonight, just discussion. So um, if you wanted action, it would be either in resolution ordinance, uh, but you could, to to Kelly's point, I think you could hold off as long as as you'd like to have the just the public input into that matter.
Other questions or comments?
Do you have staff meetings? First or third Monday at noon or would it make more sense?
Uh, it it won't be impacted. Our our leadership team meets and and one thing we do look at is the upcoming agenda to go over the items, ask if there's any questions, ask if any items are missing. And we just have those the Wednesday, the Wednesday before our commission meetings and that would be unaffected, that would be unaffected.
Yeah, that's one thing I was thinking about too, is how can we make it so, you know, the staff could have this more of a staff update time? So we don't dig into their evenings as well. But I don't know what that looks like, so.
Good.
And most of the meetings and that, I was looking at my calendar and that, the meet at noon do not meet on Mondays. Any direction to it, uh, to the staff?
I think we should continue to look into, I'll just say the first at noon. Third at five thirty. But.
Yeah, whatever.
No action tonight, but we'll get, we'll take feedback on that. Direction is to prepare a resolution. Yeah. Hold on, next time?
Yep, that that that'd be fine. Um, so first meeting, looking at a noon, second meeting, keeping it five thirty.
Or vice, I'm, yeah, that.
Is there, is there preference from the group?
Not really, no preference.
If there's a pattern on which meetings tend to go longer, but there's probably not, so.
Nope, just just those holidays that I think. Generally fall more on the third, third Monday than they would, or closer to the latter half of the month. Even in that case, you look at Presidents' Day, Martin Luther King, um, those Monday holidays, we we just, we'd meet on Tuesday instead. People might have out of town plans that weekend or something similar. And yeah, whatever, what do you guys want? These are your meetings and we're happy to support what you're looking for.
Any other thoughts or direction? So was the consensus that the first, looking at the first meeting, first Monday of the month be at noon? Second meeting of uh, be at five thirty? That gives staff some direction and to to look at it and and present something, so. And then it also would be nice, you know, uh, since we're out here to get public feedback. All right, with that, October twenty five, finance updates. Jameson?
September, finance updates.
All right.
So budget planning, we prepared for the two thousand twenty six budget for its first reading. Audit transition, we court coordinated termination of Sonfish and Company and onboarding of Williams and Company. As new audit firm, they will be onsite November third. Address, I I also formulated a letter addressing state penalty waiver for late two thousand twenty three audit filing. And that has been mailed off for consideration. The utility surcharges for the drinking water and clean water SRF um, have been implemented on the October utility bills. We developed public messaging and billing inserts and um, those have gone out with pretty good transition, so. Um, ClearGov implementation is still continuing. We're working on digital budget book and capital planning modules, scorecards and templates being refined for the November public release. This update covers year to date through September of two thousand twenty five, which is seventy four point eight percent through the year.
Amy, can I ask a, um, thanks for the update. What is the state penalty? If, I mean, it's if they wouldn't waive it for us, what is it?
It's ten dollars a day for each day, um, unfilled. Last year, it was seventy eight dol- seventy eight days late, I believe it was, so seven hundred and eighty dollars.
And that is from the June date?
As far as we know, that was waived?
Yes, th- yes.
Yep, so so last year, it would have been seven hundred and eighty dollars. You can send a letter to the Attorney General stating what was going on, the reasons for that, and then he can choose whether to to waive that. And that's what occurred last year and we're optimistic that we would see the same one this year. I think this year was seventy three days?
I thought it was seventy eight, but.
Uh, I I, you said, was seventy eight the twenty three audit or the twenty two audit?
No, twenty three audit was seventy eight days.
That that sounds right, I remember a seventy something, so seventy eight on the twenty three audit. The twenty two audit was was probably a month longer than that.
Correct.
Um, and our understanding was that that was waived as well. Does that make sense?
Yeah, thanks.
I do have a quick question too. So the, I s- I noticed on my bill, the the SRF surcharges there. So what did we do for public messaging? Did, was that a social media push or?
Yeah, we had, we had put out, um, I think, three different um, posts on on the through social media. Um, we had advertised elsewhere as well, but the the big thing was we had, I think, an eight page document that walked through a lot of the questions we've received from the public. Um, a lot of the confusion or the questions we were receiving, we we put as much much detail out there as as we could. Uh, because it was, it's a complicated subject, we wanna make sure we were open and transparent. And so that that eight page document was available right away at the beginning of whatever week it was that we released that. But then we kind of highlighted a few different pieces of that throughout the week, um, so that people could could see that. And 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 we, after doing so, we didn't receive any any questions um, at that point.
That document's also available on our website under educational pieces, um, so that we can use that as a reference when people do call in. But I would say overall, the transition with that and putting out the materials that we did mitigated a lot of um, conflicting issues that could have arisen.
So have we seen a lot or gotten a lot of questions since this bill just went out, right? The first one?
The first in October. Um, we've had a few, but not as many as I expected, so it's it's gone really well.
Good.
Yeah. Um, I I think the bills are transparent like they need to be. They say what they should be, um, it breaks it out clearly, they're easy to understand. Um, any future surcharges will also be broken out in their own individual line item. And I think that's transparency we need to provide to the public. Any other questions on that? Good. Cash on hand, we have ten point six two million, of which invested.
Cash on hand, we have ten point six two million, of which investments is four point one four million, checking five point six five million, money market five hundred and seventy-four thousand, other two hundred and fifty-one thousand. This slide does include the electric construction account that was active first part of September, and that is the four point five band drawdown for the electric revenue. And then we have restricted cash of six hundred and thirty-six thousand. And I apologize, that account was active first part of October, but we did include it as we were setting it up. And this is the revenue guidelines. On this, you'll note the utility funds are carrying higher balances due to SRF draws, timing and surcharge implementation. The general fund cash, if we look at LAIC payments or both revenue and expenses in our long-term debt issued for revenue, if we take those out of the mix, then we are tracking closer to the overall budgeted amount, and this will tighten as we enter the fourth quarter. The other thing that we'll see an increase in is license and permitting. Those will increase in the fourth quarter as well with all the liquor license coming through. Expenditures. The expenditures lagging would be anything not coming through and not submitted, so we'll see an uptick uptick in that in the fourth quarter as well. The two thirteen second cent sales tax expenses are only one point seven percent of the budget. We don't have anything paid to Dakota State yet, which would be the hundred thousand dollar contribution for the stadium, and then we do not have the anything contributed to the sales tax rebate for seventy-five thousand, so that would make up the bulk of those. The other piece of that is for the two twenty special maintenance fund. That is partly because the two thousand twenty-five chip seal project will not be completed this year. It will be completed in two thousand twenty-six. I've retained those funds from the two thousand twenty-five budget and I'm taking them forward to two thousand twenty-six to complete both those projects.
Amy, what about five eighteen city hall construction?
And that'll zero out. We need to do an appropriation to bring it back in balance, and that's just for the end of city hall construction. I intend on putting all those appropriations through on the next meeting. Profit and loss for September? Year to date? Sales tax? I I think, I feel like you've mentioned this, Jameis, or maybe it was in our conversations, we did see a dip in sales tax for September, twenty-three point seven three percent, so it's softening in that area. If trend holds, I think we could see the number coming really close to the end of the year in what we projected or slightly lower. I just think it's something we need to monitor. It's been volatile all year, ups and downs, so it's very hard to project.
Yeah, I'll repeat what I've said in previous meetings as well. The the year over year from monthly numbers, I I don't pay a lot of of credit to. I I've certainly watched it. We included it in the meetings here. We want you to see that. It's that that total year that's going to be most important, and that is down one point nine percent. So that's the the more important to realize. Twenty-three percent down, that does more than we're expecting, but if Amy slips to the next slide here, the orange line there is the twenty twenty-four numbers, and September last year was was a big increase. Last year's April and September were the two months that were up substantially. And so we expected this year, the month over, the year over year, numbers for September would be down. They are down more than we had expected. As you can tell, the last eighteen months, incredibly sporadic, if you follow those lines, twenty-two, twenty-three, pretty stable, consistent with what you'd expect, twenty-four, twenty-five, very much the opposite. So I will note, as you can see here, that the fourth quarter of twenty-four was was low compared to previous years. And so that might give twenty twenty-five a little bit of a chance to to catch up on that total year number. But I think this this kind of shows what many people are seeing across the state. The the economy is slowing. People generally have a little bit less money to spend, and and you're seeing that those recessionary indications pop up in other cities as well. Any questions on sales tax or I think that's the update? So any questions at all?
Questions or comments?
Thank you to Amy and her team for, I know that you guys have been working really, really hard on finalizing the budget information and still working on it, so thank you for all the work that you've been putting in there.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any public comment? Anyone from the audience that have anything they want to share? Seeing none, our next regular commission meeting will be Monday, November third, two thousand twenty-five, five thirty P M. And we will be having a city circle open to the public from nine to ten A M. on Wednesday, October twenty-second, at the community center. So if you have any questions or comments or just want to stop and visit and see what other people have concerns about, see us nine A M. to ten A M. Wednesday, October twenty-second, at the Madison Community Center. And we also have openings on a couple of our city boards. So if you're interested in either one of those and that, please fill out the forms and or contact our administration. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for being in attendance.